All right. I'd like to call to order the November 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Bayport City Council. Let's, I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thanks. Matt, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bliss.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. All right, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I second.
Thanks, John and Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there are no proclamations, commendations, petitions, or announcements, so we'll go right into our open forum. It's a portion of the meeting to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the agenda. The city council may take action or reply at the time of the statement, or may give direction to staff regarding investigation of comments expressed. A total of 15 minutes is allotted for all of the public comment during the open forum. We do have a scheduled guest, Kent Ryers and Brett Doyle, but actually only, is it just Brett that's here?
It's just Brett.
Just Brett's here from Woodfire Wellness, so you wanna come on up and say hi?
Sure, I'm speaking right here.
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, this, yep.
Yeah. Testing, testing.
So I, uh, I guess I brought some handouts. I don't know if this is practical, or maybe I'll just offer those to anybody who's interested. They've got some photos of our, uh, of our sauna units and things like that, QR code for our website, um, but I don't-
Just tell us who you are and where you're from, and then we'll get in.
Give you the verbal rundown.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, my name's Brett, I'm from Woodfire Wellness. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak here tonight, and for the opportunity to come and enjoy this practice in Bayport. Um, the idea behind our business concept really revolves around the Nordic cycle, and that is heat, cold, and a period of kind of resetting or relaxing the nervous system, giving you a chance to let the internal thermometer catch up. Um, and so, that's what we strive to do, is just create a, an environment where you can practice those three components for the sake of numerous potential health benefits, improved mood, things like that.
So Brett, just in case people are two beats behind and didn't watch our other council meetings, we had allowed, um, your business to come into Lakeside Park, and we gave you a, just kind of a short version of what you're actually gonna do at Lakeside Park, and when you're gonna start, and that, 'cause I feel like you may have jumped a little further in than some people may be caught up to, if that makes sense.
Uh, fantastic.
Okay.
So we've got, essentially, I, I think we're kind of earmarking the 21st and 22nd of this month, so a few weeks from now.
Okay.
Um, to bring two 28-foot mobile sauna units to Lakeside Park. Uh, each one of these is outfitted with a standard hot room, you know, with a, with a big, full-size barrel sauna stove, imported from Finland, it, it built out with a lava rocks, you can pour water over the rocks to get the steam effect, um, that kind of thing. It's a much more robust radiant heat than what you would normally see at an electric sauna in a gym or something like that. Each unit also has a changing room, or two changing rooms, in each, in each unit. Um, a lot of people come with their swimwear underneath the clothes, but we have facilities there to change, we've got bins for people to store personal items, hooks on the wall to hang things, um, and even in, like, an interior lounge, if you wanna come out of the heat and just kind of relax for a little bit, but remain inside out of the elements, we'll have that available too. Uh, beyond that, we have, we'll set up patio furniture outside of the units, so that especially once it starts getting cooler out, you can migrate outdoors, you know, kind of the next level of cooling off in between heat cycles. Uh, we, we usually provide, like, cold water buckets and ladles, you can, you know, experiment with a little cool water, um, in between the heat. And then, one thing I'm really excited about, and we've, I, I just realized I should send you the, we got a permit from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, uh, surface permit to cut holes in the ice on the St. Croix for, like, the final epic level of cooling down, if you wanna plunge in the, in the, uh, St. Croix River in the wintertime, um, so, really looking forward to that. Um, there's always gonna be somebody on site on days that we operate, we plan to operate Tuesday through Saturday. Um, there will always, it's usually gonna be me on site, but my better half Jill fills in occasionally, my business partner Kent, uh, don't be surprised to see him there. Um, there's always somebody present to stoke the fires, um, to answer questions, to, you know, observe for the sake of safety, um, always somebody there to use as a resource, um, you know, and it, we don't have, like, a set schedule where you cycle in the hot room for this long and then go cool off for this long. There are 90-minute sessions for people to use however they want, we're there as a resource to kind of help guide things along, make sure that things stay safe, uh, and so forth. Um, we have a, our website is woodfirewellness.com. Uh, there's a QR code on this handout, but, you know, you can Google us, however you navigate to the site, you'll see the interface with our mind-body platform there, that's where you can create your account, you can see our schedule of sessions, book your times, pay for everything, um, so that by the time you arrive onsite at Lakeside Park, you're just, all you need to do is relax. Um, we, we can't accommodate, uh, cash transactions, unfortunately, uh, we will have card readers onsite, um, but I just always recommend for people to book in advance, that, that way you don't ever have to worry about, we cap every session, every unit out at 10 people, just to preserve the experience, so it's not gonna get super packed, and once we're up at 10, we won't allow anybody else, and it's just safer that way as well, you know, uh, to control the crowds, um, so the best way to ensure you get your session is to book in advance, uh, in case we come up against capacity.
Brett, are you still planning to do one of the, um, trailers as sort of like a more family-friendly one and one as more calm?
Yep, exactly.
And you can book that as your, when you go online, choose which one, which experience?
That'll be part of the description, as you're reserving your slot, you'll be able to see, like, our Finnish-style sauna is the social sauna, we call it, that's all ages, family-friendly, um, you know, plenty of talking allowed and, you know, no noise requirements or, or restrictions or anything like that. The, the other unit is, uh, the one that we call the sanctuary, uh, sessions in that unit, and it's not like we're in there shushing people, but, uh, people just kind of understand if you sign up for that, that's 18 and up, and the idea is more meditative experience, you know, more calm, relaxed, uh, less socializing.
Okay.
So we will have both of those options available, and it's worth noting that we're actually operating one of them at, at a convention in Florida, which is why we're pushing the start date out, uh, currently. Um, the other unit will stay here in Minnesota, we'll be starting with that unit by itself until the other one gets shipped back from Florida.
Okay.
So on the 21st and 22nd, we anticipate just having the social sauna available, and then beyond that, it will be both.
Wonderful. All right, and everything's going okay with getting things set up with whatever you needed with, from the city, the counties on board with the?
Yep.
Well, so we gotta just make sure that's safe and people aren't falling through the hole, there's some way to guard from that, cover it up or something eventually, right?
Yeah, it'll have to be marked, uh, at all times, so we'll take care of that, um, and-
It's not gonna be that deep either, right, like?
No, 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 it'll probably just be a couple feet deep, just to, you'll, you'll have to crouch down to get fully submerged, but, like you said, for safety, that just makes the most sense, and that's what the, uh, Sheriff's Office recommends.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, no problem there. So I guess, uh, for the general public or anybody else that needs to get in touch with us, I recommend email, info@woodfirewellness, that goes directly to me, I'll reply directly, and, um, that's the best way for anybody to contact if they have questions or wanna try and coordinate some kind of private event or anything like that, so.
Okay, and you should start getting some marketing out there, maybe on Facebook, that we can share within our Bayport, Bayport Facebook pages and things like that, and hopefully beyond that too, I mean, people can come from outside of Bayport, obviously, so.
We hope so.
Yeah, so, be great, we'll make sure to-
I look forward to being a customer.
Excellent, I look forward to having you.
Yeah, it'll be fun to try it.
And with that, I just wanna say I really appreciate the opportunity, thank you guys so much for, you know, being so open to the experience and welcoming us, and I'm just very appreciative for the opportunity, can't wait for the, for the winter, it's gonna be a good time.
Great, great, I hope so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming back and giving us the scoop.
Well, thank you!
All right, have a good evening.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else here wanna come on up and, and speak?
Mayor, councilmember staff, I'm Randy Gutzman, I actually live in Grant, but, uh, Bayport has become my favorite town.
Yay!
First and foremost, Mayor and I went through the Leadership in the Valley program through the, uh, store, Chamber of Commerce, and I really got a chance to get to know Michelle, to know of her commitment to this town, how hard she works, and I can't tell you how much that means to me.
And Randy and I did a lot of crying during leadership in the valley.
I lost my wife.
We're very sensitive.
I lost my wife.
Both of us.
About two years ago, suddenly, and it was never the plan, she was going to send me off, and if there's someplace to go, she would get me there, and so, this role of, of being on my own, trying to figure things out, it's been not easy, but, the other, the other thing I want to recognize is just across the street, it's a wonderful church where there had been, uh, a wonderful place for me to find some peace and do some healing, and, uh, and I can't tell you how much that means to me, and we have an event coming up that my partner in crime here is going to do a much better job this year.
I'm Mary Horak Binger, 228 Fourth Street South, and a member across the street at St. Croix United, formerly People's Congregational Church. Um, we have had a fall festival going for probably 30 years of different names, and it was Harvest Fest, but because we're St. Croix United now, and because Still Waters stole the name Harvest Fest about 10 years ago, we decided to rebrand as Soup and Shop. Um, you may know that Croydale is not doing their bazaar this year, there are usually four holiday events in, maybe five, in, in Bayport. Croydale is remodeling, so they are not doing theirs in December, the master gardeners at the library have stopped doing theirs, they, they are done, they're not doing their, um, wonderful sale, so it will just be the Lutheran Church and us, and possibly the, the, um, Legion will do something when they do their business, small business in the basement, but we wanted to let you know about this, and we're doing something, the other reason that I'm here is to tell you that we opened a food-sharing pantry in conjunction with St. Charles, Bethlehem Lutheran, and us, and you cannot believe how the food is flying off the shelves, and all the proceeds from the soup lunch, we're not charging this year, we're going, uh, doing a free will donation, and all proceeds are going to go for keeping the food pantry, um, stocked. I just heard today that Wally across the street, who's also the commander at the Legion, he's thinking, you know, he gets to see the, the pantry out his window, and he's thinking ahead to the winter when we can't have perishables, we can't have anything glass that will break, um, and I, you know, we haven't, we haven't even started to discuss it yet, but I just wanted to let you know that the need is great and the response has been unbelievable. Um, this day, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, we'll probably have 400, maybe 500 people walk through the door, we invite our local law enforcement to come for lunch and to wander around, because there will be, um, local vendors, as well as the amazing lunch, and lots of fun things happening. Um, but as you're planning ahead, think about that, the food need for the people who don't have the transportation up to, um, you know, Valley Outreach, and I was just thinking today, when the school gets redone with this building, we might have to be in discussion with the district, I don't know that our church can, can expand, we'll see, but I just want you to know that the, that the need is great, and we're excited about this, so please come.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that you do, Mary, thanks for coming, yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you, Randy, it's nice to see you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak to the council tonight? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. We're gonna consider a resolution adopting items 1 through 7, number 1 is October 6th, 2025 City Council Workshop Minutes, number 2 is the October 6th City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, and then 3 is the October 6th Joint City Council and Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, and then, uh, 4 is October Payables and Receipts, 5 is the October Building, Plumbing, Mechanical, and Zoning Permits, 6, revisions to the city's personnel policy to comply with state law for paid family leave and family medical leave, which is just an asterisk, and number 7, a change order, change order number 1 from Kooz Contracting for 2 and 18-point road property mitigation. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks, Katie and Ethan, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. All right, and now we are going to move on to public hearings, we're gonna, um, have certification of the past due solid waste recycling charges and vacant building registration fees to property taxes, Matt's gonna present the item.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, as discussed in the memo, um, every year pursuant to Chapter 443 of Minnesota statute, um, the city is allowed to assess any, um, uh, past due invoices, this one in particular, from sanitation, um, to property taxes, so, um, a list was created of the past due balances from tennis sanitation, um, city staff, um, has called and sent out a letter, um, to attempt to get these accounts zeroed out, um, so any past due ones as of December 1st, um, the city is asking authorization to assess these to the property taxes. Um, up until December 1st, you still have the opportunity to pay that in whole, uh, or in full, um, after December 1st, there will also be a 10% penalty added, um, in conjunction with assessment to property taxes. Um, staff recommends adopting the motion, certifying the past due charges to Washington County as outlined.
All right, thanks, Matt. Guess, uh, we're gonna open the public hearing, if anyone that would wish to address the city council come forward right now, no one's here for that either.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Carl.
I second.
And Katie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then we are going to discuss, got a, yeah, we do this all the time, pretty straightforward? Okay, motion to certify?
I'll move to approve the certification of past due solid waste recycling charges and vacant building registration fees to property charges as presented.
Thanks, Ethan. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thanks, Katie.
Is that my side or?
Yeah, I know, what the heck? Um, do we need a roll call or just regular?
Just regular.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, so, that passes, we're on to, there's no unfinished business, so new business, consider amendments to Appendix D, the Fee Schedule, Bayport City Code of Ordinances, Matt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, on a yearly basis or as needed, uh, the city staff brings forward changes to the fee schedule, um, we try and make it only on a yearly basis, but if items come up, um, it's more annual than that. Um, the proposed changes were actually reviewed at the workshop session, um, prior to the meeting, discussion was had, um, specific ones such as zoning, um, engineering review, um, from my perspective, council had questions answered, but if there's outstanding questions specific to ones, or they want to, um, specify any ones that, um, feel the need to, um, we're welcome to, or open to, uh, answering those questions, um, I'm not gonna go into any great detail, they're available, um, within the, um, packet, so with that, um, city staff is recommending, um, the changes that are being proposed.
I think we do make, need to make one clarification, the changes in the packet for the peddler solicitor license and investigation fees changed from packet to what you presented at the workshop.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, that'll be updated in a new packet that goes online, once it gets finalized.
Okay, so if anyone's looking at the current packet, you're gonna have to, basically what it changed, there were three different breakouts proposed for the peddler solicitor license fee, and instead we've changed it to just the same fee per person regardless of size of company, so, um, it's gonna be $50 per person. Um, so, does anyone, um, have anything they wanna discuss or chat about, anything? We went over it in the workshop, everything seemed pretty straightforward, so, okay.
I'll move to approve an amendment to Appendix D Fee Schedule of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances as presented and summary for publication.
Second?
All right, thanks, Ethan and Carl, roll call.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. Thanks, all right, now we're gonna consider accepting an employee compensation study that was prepared by David, is it Drone? Drown, okay, Associates. Come on.
It's okay. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for having me here, my name is Mark Goldberg, I'm here representing David Drown and Associates, I'm gonna go through the presentation, I hate hearing myself drawn on, so please, if there's something that's not clear, or you want more details, just let me know and we'll go through it. So just explain a little bit about our background, what we're trying to do with this, and then what we found. So David Drown's been doing this for a lot of years, over 25 years, um, about eight, nine years ago, our clients started coming to us and asking for help with HR-related issues, and that's when my partner, Dr. Tessa Melvin, started the class and comp group within, um, within David Drown, I joined, it'll actually be five years next week, two weeks, something like that, um, before that I was with Arthur J. Gallagher, helped to lead their public sector compensation group, before that with the U of M and the Met Council, so my nearly 30 years doing this, over half of it is specifically within the public sector. So, what are we trying to do? We're trying to give you a class and comp system that makes sense, one that is internally equitable, meaning when you line things up, that hierarchy makes sense within the city, and when you go to the market, and we'll talk about the market in just a few minutes, you're being, you're paying where you want to be relative to the market, not here to do staffing, not here to reduce anyone's pay, no one will see a reduction in pay as a result of these studies, ever, at least from my side, you know, but it's not, everyone gets a 2%, 3% increase, it's, okay, what's the data show, and then where do you want to position this, you know, this job compared to the market? So, we looked at 20 different public sector institutions, and it's not just who's right around you, that's gonna be part of it, can't get away from that, but it's also, hey, who do you lose people to, where do you recruit people from, who's similar to you, maybe it's in terms of services provided, or population, or, you know, a number of different factors, so, Medina, for example, is one of my clients, and they choose for their comparisons a lot bigger cities because they've got the Medina Ballroom, they've got a lot of places there, so, you know, we don't go off population size for them, we go off a lot of other factors, and here are the places we chose. I think you, as a council mayor, I think you've seen this before, right?
Uh-uh, not the final list, I did not.
Okay, does this look like a good list?
These are a lot of the cities, we typically see some of these, there's some new ones on there, but, yeah, for me, I would say yes.
Okay.
Matt?
And it is funny-
Oh, Matt was in on helping pick them, so he was gonna agree, I'm sure.
Kinda, that's what I'm saying.
And a lot of these are our clients, so, you know, we had a lot of the data from it. So, what happens is, we will ta, ask these cities if they're not a current client, hey, can you send us a roster? So we'll get the actual rosters from these cities and go through it with administration here, so, Matt and Sarah have seen this data ad nauseam, um, how many rows of data do we have, I don't even remember, a couple hundred, right, guys? But we're careful in going through it, and we're making sure, hey, are these the right matches? In some cases, it's fairly easy, you know, police officer's a police officer, but in other cases, hey, is this accountant the right match, is this, are these other positions kind of right match, what have we used for, for other jobs for Columbus, or for Falcon Heights, or for Redwood Falls, or for Lake City, you know, what do we match to, and what does that look like? So, we're really careful about going through all of this, um, and all the data is current, um, right now, I think it's like 180 cities we have data from, 2025 data from, so we have the most robust database of anyone in the state.
So you say that you, if you go back, that you eliminate, um, data points that are significantly more or less than the others, is there a standard?
Two standard deviations is generally-
Okay, so you are using some standard criteria for-
I'm usually looking at, like, okay, is this, is this within two standard deviations or not?
Okay.
Sometimes we still leave it in there, even if it's high or low, um, but, you know, we are looking at that, like, is something way off?
But you are the one making those decisions, staff had nothing to do with choosing-
I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll review it with, with account, you know, with, with my contact, but it's like, okay, you know, here's, we don't remove it for anything, we'll put it in a spotlight section, so, let's say we had 10 matches for an, for an accountant, and eight of them were between 45 and 55,000, and one of them's at 25,000, one of them's at 90,000, I'll remove that one that's at 25 and 90, put it in a spotlight section below, so it's still there, but it's not being included in the overall averages, but Matt could say, you know what, I know that's really high, but it needs to be in there, or, you know, or for whatever reason, it needs to be in there, that's fine, I mean, Maybe it's in terms of services provided, or population, or, you know, a number of different factors. So Medina, for example, is one of my clients, and they choose for their comparisons a lot bigger cities because they've got the Medina Ballroom, they've got a lot of places there. So, you know, we don't go off population size for them, we go off a lot of other factors. And here are the places we chose. I think you, as a council mayor, I think you've seen this before, right? No?
Not the final list. I did not.
Okay. Does this look like a good list?
These are a lot of the cities. We typically see some of these. There's some new ones on there, but for me, I would say yes.
Okay.
Matt?
And it is funny.
Well, Matt was in on helping pick 'em, so he was gonna agree, I'm sure.
And a lot of these are our clients, so, you know, we had a lot of the data from it. So what happens is, we will ask these cities, if they're not a current client, hey, can you send us a roster? So we'll get the actual rosters from these cities and go through it with administration here. So Matt and Sarah have seen this data ad nauseam. How many rows of data do we have? I don't even remember. Couple hundred, right, guys? But we're careful in going through it, and we're making sure, hey, are these the right matches? In some cases, it's fairly easy. You know, police officer's a police officer. But in other cases, hey, is this accountant the right match? Is this, are these other positions kinda right match? What have we used for other jobs for Columbus, or for Falcon Heights, or for Redwood Falls, or for Lake City? You know, what do we match to, and what does that look like? So we're really careful about going through all this. And all the data is current. Right now, I think it's like 180 cities we have data from, 2025 data from. So we have the most robust database of anyone in the state.
So you say that you, if you go back, that you eliminate data points that are significantly more or less than the others? Is there a standard?
Two standard deviations is generally...
Okay. So you are using some standard criteria for...
I'm usually looking at like, okay, is this, is this within two standard deviations or not?
Okay.
Sometimes we still leave it in there, even if it's high or low. But, you know, we are looking at that, like, is something way off?
But you are the one making those decisions. Staff had nothing to do with choosing.
I mean, I'll review it with account, you know, with my contact, but it's like, okay, you know, here's, we don't remove it for anything. We'll put it in a spotlight section. So let's say we had 10 matches for an accountant, and eight of them were between 45 and 55,000, and one of them's at 25,000, one of them's at 90,000. I'll remove that one that's at 25 and 90, put it in a spotlight section below, so it's still there, but it's not being included in the overall averages. But Matt could say, you know what, I know that's really high, but it needs to be in there, or, you know, or for whatever reason, it needs to be in there. That's fine. I mean, you can, you'll, they saw the data, so, you know, it's completely open, but yeah, I'll make an initial recommendation. Some places don't want me to remove anything. Nisswa did that, if I remember correctly. They were like, no, leave everything in there. Okay, that's fine. But, you know, it's just a question of what the city wants.
Do we know if we did remove outliers in any of the cases? We did?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. I mean, I prefer to remove the outliers and deal with the more standard...
Madam Mayor, though, some places don't.
Okay.
So 10% plus or minus is considered market, and that is not my standard, that's actually Department of Labor standard. And what it says is, you could be 9% below or 8% above. In both cases, it would be considered market competitive. Obviously, it's a different message, but it's generally considered market competitive because plus or minus 10% says that's gonna encompass, you know, encompass most people, over 90% of people who are fully functional in their job, that paid at different rates for a lot of the reasons listed here. So, could be previous experience, could be, you know, how long they've been in the job, could be a lot of different things. But what we consider market is plus or minus 10%. So with that, what we're proposing for you guys is... 3.78?
Yes.
So, you guys are gonna be above market. You're competitive in both the minimum and the maximum. Minimum's gonna be a little bit higher, maximum's gonna be, you know, about 14% higher, but it's gonna put you in a good spot to retain or recruit the people, you know, that you want. Conceptually, does that align with what you want for the council?
Are people understanding what this actually means?
So you're saying we should hire wages this? I guess I don't know.
Yeah. Can you just take a step back and explain what we're actually doing?
So what we're, let me kinda keep going through this a little bit, 'cause I'm gonna kinda, just kinda walk you through it. So what we do is, we get the market information that I mentioned, and then we evaluate these jobs. We have to evaluate them because in the state of Minnesota, there's Minnesota Pay Equity legislation. So you have to use a standard, or some kind of job evaluation tool to say, okay, you know, here are the points assigned to this job. As a quick aside, when people fail pay equity, they send them to us. So, you know, we do a lot of this. But it's a way of just saying, hey, what's that hierarchy look like? You guys chose Jet, which is what most people use. Jet says there's these seven different factors you can use to evaluate the job. I'm gonna kinda go through them real quickly in a few seconds. And it's, it's a really comprehensive tool. It looks at supervision, it looks at hazards, it looks at decision-making qualifications, and it was designed specifically for the public sector, so it works well with that. So, there are these seven qualifications, excuse me, seven factors. Qualifications is the first one, meaning what is the minimum education experience necessary to do the job? So Matt might have a PhD in 25 years of experience, which is great, lets him do his job effectively, but if he were to leave, which we don't want, would it be a PhD in 25 years as the minimum, or a bachelor's in five? Decision-making says, all right, what are the decisions inherent in the role? What kind of decisions does this job really kinda control? Is there supervision? If something happens and breaks, what is the impact on the city and who's responsible? Problem solving is how technical is the job to do? And then, similar to decision-making, what's the effect on the city? Relationships is a fancy way of talking about communication. Who are they talking to, and what's the nature of those communications? Are they giving directions to the bathroom, or are they standing up in front of state agencies? Physical effort, how much you gotta lift, and how often you gotta lift it. Mental effort, how mentally focused do you need to be in that job? Good example of that is someone who's a dispatcher. You know, qualifications aren't terribly high, some decision-makings aren't even that great, but they need to be mentally focused, like, all the time, or somebody's gonna die. Hazards and environment, kinda what are you exposed to in the job? Just an office job? They're on the highway, kinda what's, what's kinda the deal? But even if they're in the office, do they have to work that front desk counter, where they have to deal with the public at times? That can be uncomfortable. There's some extra points with that. So, what, oh, just to be clear with this, we're only looking at the work content. How long someone's been doing the job does not matter. How well they do the job does not matter. We take the people out of this. This is the position itself, not the person. So, Councilmember Hill, what you're asking is kinda what happens with this? What does this look like? We take that market information, we evaluate these jobs and assign a certain number of points. We use those to put together grades and salary ranges and say, okay, you know what? When we look at all this, here's a clustering of four jobs that are between 260 and 270 points. Oh, they probably should be in the same salary range. Another job might be at 250 points. Maybe put that in a different salary. So we kinda look at that and say, how do we put these all together, and how many grades really kinda make sense? And then we align those salary ranges with the market information. We didn't get market information for every job. We got about 70%, say, most of them. As a quick aside, 70%, 80%, that's pretty normal within cities. When I was with Gallagher, if we got 40%, 30%, 40%, we felt good. So we do a lot higher matches and get a lot more data here than in my old employer. But we say, hey, where is that salary range compared to the market? And when I was showing you that 3.78 at the minimum, or 14.1, 14. whatever at the maximum, it's where are those positions compared to the market on the total? And I'm gonna show you that in just a few seconds. But so we put all of this kinda ties together. The spreadsheet that we use is a spider web. I mean, everything is literally linked all together. Matt was having fun with it at times.
He's kind of a data geek.
Oh, I know. That's why I saved the version outside of Client Access. Not just for him, but it's standard practice we do. But so we also say, hey, how wide does that salary range need to be? What is the distance from that set, from that first step to the last step? What does that look like? And that range width can vary quite a bit. Most times in Minnesota, it's between 28 and 38%. But I've done it as little as 20%, and this wasn't in Minnesota, this is in Florida, 120%. So, you know, you can determine a lot, you can determine it a lot of different ways. But again, we use all this together, everything kind of all falls together. It's not one job per grade, I wanna be clear with that too. So you can have a whole bunch of jobs in one grade. Maybe you have a librarian and a police officer in the same grade. Well, how can that be? Well, when you look at the qualifications, when you look at some of the other factors, okay, yes, the police officer has a much higher physical effort and mental effort, but there's a lot of higher qualifications for a librarian. They're making decisions too, so, you know, it, that's an example of, of something where, well, you know, maybe, I don't remember if those are in the same grade for you guys or not, but that, it's a question of looking at all the factors in total, kinda where do things come out? So, we did put together 13 grades for you guys, 10 steps in each grade. It's pretty common. Eight to 12 steps is most common in the state of Minnesota. Grades are anywhere from 5 to 13% apart, meaning from grade one to grade two, it might be 12%, but from grade seven to grade eight, it might be only 5%. You don't wanna have any grades less than 5% apart from each other, because then there's too much overlap. There's not much, I mean, you know, just really kinda right on top of each other. And if you get much more than, let's say, 15%, it's a huge jump from one grade to the next. So, you know, we keep it between generally 5 and 15%. Within the steps, anywhere from 4.25 to 3.5%. We did what's very common within the state is higher increases earlier in the structure, and then a little bit lower increases later, with the goal that, hey, if you've got a 10-step structure, getting someone up to step four or five, which is about where market is for most jobs, you know, you wanna get them there as quickly as possible. Then you get beyond that, and you're paying above market, so you can slow things down a little bit. People would generally move through steps annually. Your range width is 41, a little over 41 and a half percent, which is pretty good. That's, that's very competitive. It's a little bit higher than most, but pretty solid.
What does that mean, range width?
So that means how far is that from that minimum to the maximum? So, Madam Mayor, when you see here, it starts at 24 and goes up to...
Oh, so grade one to grade, well, you said third...
Nope, step one, step one to step...
Oh, you're going steps?
Step one to step 10.
Oh, okay.
Yep, step one to step 10. And if you're wondering why that 24 in the corner is in yellow, that's the keystone. If I change that from 24 to 23 or 25, everything else changes.
So you said 13 steps, but there's 14?
Nope.
Or grades, I mean, didn't you say 13 grades on the other side?
13 grades, there is an extra grade in there, but it's actually 13 grades.
We're not using...
We're not using grade 14 right now.
Gotcha.
Yep, but 13 grades, 10 steps. So that's how everything kinda gets put together.
And so to go back to the one, the question that Katie asked, that said something about 3% to 14, where does that apply to that?
I didn't actually put that in here. So with that, it's every single position that we were able to find market data on. And again, it's about 70%, 70% of the positions. We said, hey, where are you now? Where are you going, you know, compared to the market? And some were, most of them were, I don't think we had anyone red, who was 10% below? No. Everyone was at least market competitive or above market.
At our current rates?
No, in the proposed, in the proposed...
In the proposed?
I don't know where you were in the current ones.
You're saying, the way you've structured this, we're very competitive with the market?
But there's always a variance. So some are gonna be a little bit better than others, some are just gonna be competitive. But on the total, it was, again, 3.7 whatever percent on the minimums, and 14% of the maximums. So...
So, Mark, I wanna verify that. That 3.7 and that 14, that's the average, right? That's not for everybody. So it's not for every single position, like Mark indicated. Certain positions could be at...
95% to 5%.
So if you're looking at column one, and you did an average, and compared all those numbers to a column one of...
Yes, ma'am.
All the other cities, all those 70...
That's correct. What we did was, here's where you are currently, and here's where the average is for police officer, let's say. Here's what the, here's where you are now, here's what the average is for police officer, for the minimums, for the maximums, and here's where the cities coming out. No position was less than 10% below, you know, the average. Some were, I wanna say like 93, 95%, but everyone was competitive, and quite a few of them were over 10% above.
Okay. It's still a little fuzzy, and I think, like, maybe it's fuzzy on purpose, but I don't know.
Do you want me to pull up the, the analysis tab? I have it on the spreadsheet. I mean, it isn't...
That's a question for them. They need, like...
I do have the details that I can share with you. I didn't put it in the presentation, but I have it in, on the jump drive. I did bring my, the spreadsheet with all the information. I can show you on the analysis tab, every position that we found market data for, and where they were compared to the market. Is that something you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, wanna see?
Probably, I don't know if we need to see it at this point. I don't know. How are you guys feeling? I guess I'm just, I just kinda want you to be able, it'd be nice to be able to say, and maybe we have to go back to that one screen that Katie had the question on, because that's still is a little confusing to me. So the new minimum of structure compared with the benchmark minimum, ours on average are almost 4% higher across all the positions. But you're not, but what you're trying to say is that there are some positions that aren't 4% higher, somewhere above that, somewhere below that, and it doesn't go past 10% below. So we're within a good...
Market competitive.
A range, 'cause you said, is that's where that 10% fluctuation thing you pointed out earlier comes in?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're within that 10%.
For every single position.
For every single one of them.
Currently, without any change.
No, this is...
It's a proposal.
We're, we've scratched the old one. We don't even talk about that one anymore.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not sure...
That's what I wanted to know. I wanna know what it is now, and what your data is showing differently.
And I think the problem is, can you? Because I feel like we changed, like, all, well, the grades, there's still grades, right?
I can show it to you.
But it doesn't mean that the jobs that we had in those grades before are still in those grades.
No.
So it doesn't really tell you that much, other than that you're changing the skeleton that the jobs go into.
So, again, if you want me to pull it up, I can, you know, I can...
Sounds like maybe we do wanna see it.
We have a very quick meeting today.
Yeah, we have, we have time, I guess is what they're saying.
Just hit escape, Mark.
Hit escape. Okay.
Okay. Hold on.
I'm gonna just...
Yep. Got it.
I think it'll just take a second, right?
Oh. Yeah. Okay. So this, Councilmember Hill, this is what you're looking at. So this is, I think, what you were asking for. Here are all the positions, so we found market data for 13 of these positions. Then, where are you currently? Here's what you're paying, your minimums, your maximums, and then what is the benchmark for this? So what this shows, so that library clerk, for example, the 23, 24, that is the average of the market data that we're able to find for that, for that job. Again, at least four data points for it. And then where is the maximum? And then what's the actuals for it? And then here's what we're proposing. That job's gonna be grade one. What does that look like? Oops. Sorry, didn't mean to do that. So, you guys currently, for that, again, if we wanna... Put up freeze panels on that. Okay. So for that, oh, great, that didn't do it. But for that library clerk, right now, you're at 4% below and 9% above, and it's actually moving to 3% above and 18% above. So you can see here, nobody's in red, only green. But you can see kinda where they are, and kinda what the variance is behind a bunch of these. Councilmember Hill, is that...
Yeah. This is exactly what I was...
Again, I got it all.
I like it, yeah. Thank you.
But isn't there a little nuance to this, because the grade may have changed for the job?
Grade absolutely changed, so what we wanted to do was, we wanted to align the grade with where the market is. So something could have been grade five before, and maybe that was whatever the salary range was. Okay, well, putting it, and that's where this information is, Mayor. So that's where your current minimums and maximums are. But I'm saying, okay, you know, what does it look like now? If we're changing it over to this new structure, what's the impact? Does that make sense?
Okay. Thank you. This was very helpful.
Okay. Like I said, we show our work. We got all the stuff here.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Does it make any sense, or do you have questions, or...
Yeah, you guys are in good place, that's all.
You're good? You have questions?
Oh, I do, yeah.
Okay.
You made the statement that we're not trying to lower anybody's pay. I find it hard to believe that all of this will never, will never enact that, like, oh, well, this person's getting paid too much.
I find it hard to believe that all of this will never, will never enact that, like, oh, well, this person's getting paid too much. That's a tough deal for me to swat, like, if everybody wants this whole, all this stuff to say, oh, this is what people should get paid, well, somebody should get paid less. I'm not advocating for people getting less money, but I can't believe that all this would just be like, yep, every single person deserves more all the time, a hundred percent of the time.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, um, it's not the people. We take the people out of it. So if you've got someone who's being paid above the salary range maximum, and, do we have anyone? I don't think we did. Okay, you guys did. But let's say you did. You had someone who's being paid above the salary range maximum. I would never say that person's salary gets lowered. What I'd suggest is you freeze that person. So maybe that person's hourly rate is forty dollars an hour, and the max goes at thirty. You freeze that person's hourly rate until the salary range catches up with what their, their rate is. Some places will still give someone a cola or half a cola or something like that. It's not what I recommend, but I do have clients that do that. But the best way to approach it is, okay, you know what, you're, we're not reducing your pay, but you're being paid above where the market is showing for this job. We're gonna wait, you're gonna stay where you're at until the market catches up with your pay.
You said that the state has legislation?
State, yep, Minnesota has, um, pay equity legislation.
So my question is, why doesn't the state have all of this and have the guidelines, and we put it into a database? I have a hard time paying an outside private company when the state, if they're gonna legislate something, then they should be the ones dictating it. I have a hard time, like, paying as a city, wanting to pay a bunch of money to a company when the state, if they're gonna legislate something, they should have the guidelines. It shouldn't be out to a specific...
Well, the state has, has a state match system, but the truth is, that state match system is not good. And the cities that use it usually hate it and wanna get off of it. Am I lying with that?
Well, isn't the state system, it's not specific to public positions? Like, like, we're a city, and that is a different operating structure than corporate numbers, which is what the state might be reflecting, so it's kinda a...
The state should be using, if, if you have...
They should have it separated out, but...
How many cities are in Minnesota? You only have a hundred and sixty?
I don't know.
Uh, there's...
No, you said you had a hundred and sixty.
I have a data...
Hundred eighty in the database. There's thousands of cities, I would imagine.
No, there's not many. I think it's in the hundreds.
In Minnesota?
How many, do you know?
I, I did know when I was on the...
I know, you used to be.
Killing me that I don't know.
But it's not in the thousands.
It's not in the thousands.
No.
But it's...
It's hundreds.
Not terribly far, I believe.
So I guess I just, I don't think if we're gonna be held to that by the state, I think the state should have the, the database, and we should be submitting that to that.
Your point is taken, Ethan, but this guy can't help that.
No, I know.
Okay.
I get it.
Okay, Ethan.
But I don't have to, I don't have to agree with it, do I?
You don't have to, but we have to, we already agreed to spend the money, and you're just making your point again that you wish we didn't have to, which... I agree. It would be great if the state had it, but to make it, to have it done right, we needed to hire a company to do it. So.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, but even without this, even if there wasn't, uh, pay equity legislation, and Minnesota's one of only two or three states that have it, we were the first. I still do, I mean, not with my DDA, I have still have clients that are outside of Minnesota from my Gallagher days, but not too many. But there's a lot of places across the country that still do this and have us do this kinda stuff because it still makes sense to have a hierarchy, to be able to say, you know what, here's why this job is here, and here's why we're paying this. Whether there's pay equity or not, that's a good message to send to people that here's, here's the rationale behind why we're placing this job in this, in this range, and why this range is where it is.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. Do you have more questions? Anyone else have questions or comments?
Pretty good. It was a nice presentation.
Yeah.
Particularly the last section, that, um, spreadsheet was helpful to see that.
Yes.
We weren't pretty far off going in the right way, so.
I can understand why...
I don't know.
This needs to happen.
Well, I said, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, a lo, a lot of very complicated data and what you have to go through, and then you had to siphon it down and make it make sense to us. So I appreciate that.
Mayor, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, for the most part. But, I mean, I, I did research for a living, so I can...
Okay.
Kind of understand it, what you're talking about. So, um, yeah. Okay, so, I guess now we have to, um, accept the...
So, Madam...
What do you want us to do?
Mark, can you kinda describe next steps for the process, right? So if the, if the city council accepts or approves that salary structure, what's next step for, like, employees and then pay equity and different things like that?
So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, what would happen is, you would accept the proposal and say, yep, this is good to go. Um, I've given Matt some, um, tools that, actually, I'm, I'm being completely transparent. Kinston County developed an employee, um, uh, information thing, which I just think is awesome. So I give any, who's the county administrator there, all the credit. But something to communicate with people, like, hey, you know, here's where you were, here's where you're going to, here's what this looks like. And then employees would have a chance to appeal. Now, what they can appeal is their grade. They can't say, I want more money. It is, oh, you put me at a grade five, and I should be at a grade six. I didn't include this information in my job description, position analysis, you know, so here's some additional information to consider. Okay, well, let's take a look at that.
Okay, and everybody within the cities, our city employees know what job description was used as the basis for their position?
Madam Mayor, um, they can be provided that...
Okay.
Description.
I remember they did have something, and I wanna get completely off track, but it's important for me to know. How, how does this jive with a union negotiated contract? That, that a particular union member has already negotiated, and now we're opening it up again, so that...
You wanna take this one?
Not particularly. Um, so from a pay equity standpoint, Mark and I did talk about this, right? So if we're holding them to that, what they're as in their union contract, it might take a little explanation with the state to determine where their best fit currently is. Our intent in the future will definitely be to attempt that, to get both unions on the same pay scale, right? That makes everything a lot easier, because if they're on the pay, same pay scale, then any changes that would be made, um, impact them directly. So currently, they're, our intent is not to include them in terms of any changes that are made in the salary structure. So...
Right, hopefully in the future.
Yes. Whether that works at pay equity, we will find out shortly.
So police officer isn't one of our grade?
It's in there.
That doesn't make sense, and I'm confused.
It's in there, but they're not gonna be counted in terms of when we present the pay equity. Yes, their adjustment won't occur, right?
Madam Mayor, what I, we'll do often with this is, here's what this looks like. Here's how it's better for you guys. So, you know, if you were to go on to the structure, here's how it would be a positive for you. Police officer being just one example of that. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But we did do it, at least to include them, because you can still always say, hey, we're not, we're not doing this, we're sticking with where we're at right now, in which case, okay, well, then we'll just kind of report on you as you normally are, but, you know, this is a better deal for you.
And so public work staff, there, everything's, there are grades for them, but we can't really use it because we just have to go with what the union has negotiated at this point. And we're hoping, next time we negotiate, we're gonna say, go with what we have here because it's better for you, according to...
Yeah, or not. I mean, that's, that's their individual right to belong...
Right.
To a union or not. I've, just in, to be transparent, I belong to a labor union for a long time, but at the same time, when you make these negotiations, they happen in good faith.
Mm-hmm.
I'm agreeing to this, you're agreeing to this, I'm happy, you're happy, and, and I wanna make sure that it doesn't get tipped to say, well, now that this came out, I, clearly I should get X percent more. You agreed to a...
No, yeah, they agreed to it.
A contract for X number of years, that X amount of money, and I think that should be held to until your contract expires, and then let er rip.
Okay. Thanks for, that was a good question.
Thank you.
And thanks for clarifying. Okay, so, our potential action is to accept the salary structure that is proposed with implementing it in January, right? There's still more?
Uh, I have one other question. So, um, can you talk to the pay equity portion of it, Mark?
So, once you agree to it, then we'll run everything through pay equity. You shouldn't, I don't remember. Were you reporting this year?
We should be reporting this year. We're not scheduled, but there were enough changes, um, last year when we moved the sergeant, um, that technically we were required to report.
Okay. So I'll run it through pay equity whenever you guys are like, yep, we're good to go. And there shouldn't be an issue?
So why wouldn't we have already run it through pay equity before we approve it?
I, cuz sometimes councilmembers just like, no, this isn't, you know, we need to go back to the...
Oh, well, because you know what, if we made changes, then you'd have to compare it again.
It'll ta, it won't take me very long to go, to run through pay equity, and I'm pretty sure you guys should pass it. But sometimes things get, get wonky. I haven't experienced this, my partner Tessa has, where some demographic changes have caused people who were passing to not pass, um, cuz pay equity, it's kinda funky how they do it. They don't care about the actual pay. What they look at is the monthly max, and they run a regression line off the monthly max and the points assigned to the job, and whether it's male-dominated, female-dominated, or, um, balanced, and then look to see which of the jobs are above or below the predicted, predicted pay line, depending, you know, using their multi-variable regression analysis. So if you have a lot of, if you don't have many female-dominated jobs, but there's a couple of them that are below, then things can get really wonky.
Okay.
I hope that you'll have a prob, if you do have a problem, I will help fix it, I promise you. It sh, it shouldn't be an issue, especially with the Jet system. Like I said, when people fail pay equity, they get sent to us, and Jet fixes a lot of it. But I'm working with the city right now. Who is actually one of your comparables where they are just missing and just below? It's a number of people, so we're gonna be changing their monthly max. I'm not even joking with you, one to two pennies. And that will change it on a monthly basis to get, it should. I'm gonna actually finish running it tomorrow. It should get them to where they need to go, but it's literally just one to two pennies difference.
I mean, wha, what happens if, what, what's the penalty, or what?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Yeah, what happens if we're still not?
What could they do? They could, um, suspend state funding, they could, uh, have fines. I know for a fact they haven't done anything like that since the early nineties. So the truth is, they're probably not gonna do anything, but it's also not, not a good look for you as a city. You don't...
Yeah, yeah, we wanna, we'll make sure we're paying equitably.
And, you know, it, you, you'd like to pass, and it's a good, I mean, it's a good message to send. But if you're, if you're not passing, I will get you to pass.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we don't have anything nicely written up for us now, so, uh, you're winging it, councilmember.
Bless you.
I will...
Yeah, bless you.
Make a motion for, um, to move...
Madam Mayor, so, um, just a motion to approve the salary structure, um, as presented. So moved.
There you go.
Second.
All right, thanks, John and Carl. All in favor? Really? We don't have a roll call vote for something this big? Hmm. All in favor?
I...
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mark.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much. Matt, thank you so much.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to see you back here, cuz that means everything lines up right. Right? Okay, all right. Okay, city council liaison reports. Let's start down with, uh, Katie.
Jump drive.
Oh, does he have...
You eject it.
Oh, Harrison, can you let him in, please? All right. Okay, Katie, what's going on with the Bayport Community Action League?
Um, at their meeting, they went over Derby Day stuff, and then the next event is the Village Green lighting. So they're working on that. Uh, they're thinking about doing it kinda like how last year it got not canceled, but moved to the library.
Oh, what went into that?
So starting at the library, and then when Santa comes, have the lighting and everything outside.
Oh, so maybe you do have a little bit of both.
Look for that on Facebook. I, I just looked before I came here, and they don't have anything yet, so.
And it's the first Wednesday in December?
First Wednesday of December, yep.
Thank you. John Watershed?
I was unable to attend last month, but I plan on, their min, their minutes are always really, really late. So I don't even have the minutes to be able to report on that, and I don't even know if we're having a meeting this Thursday yet, so...
Oh, okay.
I plan on next month being able to give a...
A recap from the meeting minutes.
Recap of the last two months.
Okay, thanks. And, um, I'm gonna skip Ethan, cuz I know I went to the cable commission forum, so, Carl?
Yeah, the airport commission meets next on December first, which I think is also a meeting date for us, but, uh, so we may, I may call an absent to that one in favor of you all.
I don't remember them ever overlapping with our meetings before.
Yeah, one surprised me.
Okay.
I think it's, uh, holiday week, the week before that, that may bump some things around.
Okay. All right, so I attended the, um, fire department open house back on October eleventh, and it was very, and it seemed like very well-attended. Um, nicely done, you guys. And then, um, the regional council mayors had a social instead of their regular meeting, which, again, was really helpful to kinda make those networking connections with some other mayors, where you actually have a chance to just chat instead of sitting down in a meeting and having a meeting. So that was really nice. And then on the twentieth, I did go to the cable commission meeting for Ethan. It was, it was so cute how they were, like, greeted me like I was royalty, cuz I hadn't been there for years, and I used to be on the cable commission, so that was really fun to walk in there, like, oh, Michelle, we're here. I was great, and I...
Excited I wasn't there.
They, um, they have the new space, which is great, and, um, the flood insurance, like, everything's going great. Was getting everything back up and running, and they're getting reimbursed for everything and replacing everything that got ruined in the flood, a pipe burst. I don't know if you remember this from before, but, so, um, everything seems to be going well there. We did approve disbursements for the past two quarters because there hadn't been meetings, and then, um, approved the twenty-twenty-six budget after some discussion about how that was panning out. We ended up adding a line item for some marketing that was just overlooked. They planned to do it, but they hadn't budgeted for it, only about five thousand dollars. And then, um, kind of an interesting aspect that you'll hopefully be talking about in the future, Ethan, um, South Washington County, their cable commission adopted the very first local broadband franchise agreement in the state. So right now, we have a cable franchise agreement, right, with Comcast, but we don't have anything, like, an agreement for broadband. And so they did that in South Washington County as another way to get, so, it's very confusing to understand how cable commissions work. But it, a little background, ours, um, is called the Central St. Croix Valley Commission, and we have that agreement with Comcast, and then we get PEG fees, so PEG stands for Public Education and Government. So if you're a cable subscriber, you're paying a tiny little fee to the cable commission so that they can put on things like our council meeting, right, and other things like football games at the school and church things and all of that. And so that, they're hoping this is another, maybe, revenue source, because, of course, fewer and fewer people are subscribing to cable. So kind of an interesting thing that you might be able to be in on. So, yeah, and then we just talked a little bit about some other ways to get some additional revenue. When I was on the commission, they had started doing some, like, ads during the pony football games, so getting, like, Josephs to pay them and some other revenue stream. So they're, that's where they're hiring, like, a marketing firm to help them think through, how can we market ourselves? How can we get more advertisers and things like that? So, um, that was about it for them. And then I went to the library board meeting on the twenty-first. They had Jill's review first, so we met a little late, and it was a pretty quick meeting, nothing really to add, other than what was in her... She does, like I said, a pretty good summary in the packet every time. And then I was at the Halloween event, uh, with the police department and the Lions, and very well-attended, as usual. It was a little drizzly, so I think people liked having the chance to come in to the old fire station. And, um, it was nice that we worked with the Department of Corrections, so they have to move their buses out, and then they let people tour the buses that they move the prisoners around in, so another kind of cool aspect. We had, uh, the canine there, and lots and lots of families coming in and just kinda plunking themselves down on the floor over by us and hanging out. It was kinda, it was kinda fun. So we made, uh, twelve and a half pounds of popcorn. My husband and I popped it. It was, uh, very fun.
That's a lot of popcorn.
I know. It was a lot of popcorn. And, uh, almost two hundred hot dogs were given away. Thanks to the bank, they supplied some little bottles of water for us to give out, and it was a great event. Thank you, PD, especially, um, Officer, Officer Jones. He was the lead on that with us. And then just this morning, I went to a paid leave info session to just kinda learn a little bit more about what's happening, and then I came back in a panic. No, not really. I came back and I talked to Matt and Lucas. I'm like, how are we gonna do this? They're like, don't worry about it. We got it all figured out. So, um, cuz that starts January first. And then I did some chamber events, a coffee talk at Market and Johnson, a mixer at the new, um, Chalice, is how you say it, the one that starts with an X. It's in the old, um, Thai Basil. Very nice, very good food, by the way. Ambassador meeting, um, learned that the Langford Exchange is a new chamber member. Um, they're giving me credit for that, since I talked to them and told them they should join, so that's exciting. And then ribbon cutting at, it's called the Gardner School, which is in Lake Elmo, which is in another preschool, which we desperately need a place for kids to go, um, basically like daycare, right? So, yeah, uh, that was my month. Um, what's going on with the city, Matt?
Um, well, let's find out.
Let's find out.
Uh, by your chief, Isinger. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, uh, for the month of October, our call volume was eighty-seven compared to one oh one. So we are, uh, fifty below last year. Our year to date is one thousand seventeen compared to one thousand sixty-seven. Monthly drills are ladders, EMR quarterly review, fire inspections are ongoing, as well as plan reviews. Uh, as Mayor mentioned, the fire prevention week we had, the open house was very well-attended. We moved the date or the time back to ten o'clock, to one o'clock, and that seems to work really good. Uh, football standby, anniversaries, Adam Staffney, seven years, Josh Isinger, twenty-four, Jake Isinger, twenty-one, and I had my fortieth anniversary with the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs this month, or in October. Uh, upcoming events, uh, SANA escort, November twenty-seventh, that may be wrong, the day after Thanksgiving. Upcoming events, Santa escort, November 27th, that may be wrong, the day after Thanksgiving.
And the 29th, I think it would be.
Yeah, it had a typo there. And then still Water Area High School sports escorts. I did let Administrator Klein know that my last day on the Fire Department's going to be January 31st, 2026.
Okay.
Because I bought a lake home, and I'll be moving.
Congratulations.
All right, congrats.
You'll need to get a replacement.
Working on it.
We are, we're working on it. We got one step done with the pay study, so.
With that, I stand for any questions?
So, Santa on, at Village Green, not on here.
That's December.
But we're not going to have a meeting before that?
No, the Wednesday.
Okay.
We contracted with Santa, he's booked.
At least I don't think we will, over here.
Yeah. Is, will, I always, and no, my kids are beyond the age of running out to see Santa on the 20th Black Friday. Is the route published on social media or somewhere?
We send it to, I thought I included my, didn't I include it in my notes, I think I did? Typically, I send it to the cities, the Bayport, Oak Park Heights, and Stillwater, and it's kind of a, he mayanders around, and we stop at the bank at 9 o'clock, Ace Hardware at 12, Cornerstone Automotive at like 1. So we have some hard stops, but, we, they do their best to get around.
There's always a little bit of a weird thing.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's-
We just wait for the year.
My kids are 20, 23, and 25, and they still run out.
It's very exciting. Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief, Fire Chief.
Fire-
He's Chief Jackson.
Is that a promotion, really?
How do you feel about wearing two hats?
I just still have the Fire Chief problem today.
Starting January 20th.
Madam Mayor and council members, we only have a couple of public events with colder weather coming up here. I don't have a whole lot to add, the mayor didn't say about the Halloween event, it was very good. Hope to continue it for many years to come. Special thank you to Lions Club for helping out, they've made it so much more easy on my staff, it's great. And then also special thank you to Ryan Jones for organizing that. We also have November 18th fraud presentation, working with Community Threat and First State Bank. This will be my third time doing the presentation. We're still not quite locked out on a location yet, but we'll put it out on social media. I'll probably talk with Aaron from the bank this week and get that nailed down for us.
What are they trying to decide, between Stillwater or Bayport, Community Threat?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
How long it should be in Bayport, since the bank and you are both in Bayport?
Try to serve all the citizens, Mayor. I just go where they tell me.
I know.
And we did have a really good showing the last time, as you were there.
Yeah, I know, but it would be, that one was in Stillwater, so, another good reason to have it down here. They need to advertise that location, that's what I'm getting at, so. Because I had Monday with the mayor, and the people that came didn't even know Community Threat existed in Bayport.
Yep.
So, just, a little-
Community Threat existed at all?
No, they knew about the Stillwater one, but, yeah.
And then, we will be starting to get the Toys for Tots buckets out here, hopefully this week, if not next week, for sure. So if people can come by and drop off donations, that would be great. There'll be one here at City Hall, there's another one in Croydale, the Department of Corrections also does one. We'll put all the stuff out on social media for people to hopefully swing by, help donate, so we can do a nice haul down to Golden Valley later in December.
What about, oh, sorry, on something like that, if somebody just wanted to give cash to Toys for Tots, is there a link, can you Venmo them, you have any ideas on stuff like that?
So what we've done in the past is that we've done a drive here with the Police Department, where we've all, you know, thrown in a few bucks, and then we'll just go up and spend it. One year, Brittany and I were up at Walmart doing some purchases, and people actually came up to us and said, here, here's a gift card, go buy some more toys for the kids, and so we've done that.
Very nice. Have you guys participated in that shop with a cop? I feel like you used to, is that-
No, there was a program, I forget the name of it, with the community outreach, where it was like a gift card donation, where Officer Lipowski went around with gift cards and, you know, some gifts, and like brought up area families.
Yeah, Holiday Hope, she helps distribute some of that.
But not the actual shop with a cop.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Director Hanson.
Madam Mayor, council members, update for Public Works. Public Works staff has been busy with our fall maintenance and cleanup around town. All of the park buildings have been shut down and winterized for the year, as well as all the irrigation systems blown out to prevent them from freezing up. Staff continues daily sweeping of citywide streets, as well as picking up leaves in our parks to prepare everything for fall. One of our things that we are doing, as Council Member Bliss said earlier, is people are receiving letters in the mail from our Utilities Department on identifying their water service lines coming into their homes. Public Works is putting a big push behind this, because we hope to get in the next phase of this, which will be the replacement of those lines that are deemed necessary to replace by the state. That would be any lead lines or galvanized lines that require replacement. This is funded through the state, and as we get closer, this not only covers the city's portion, but the homeowner's portion as well. So we'll be starting to apply for that grant, starting next year.
Okay, what percent of the locations have you already done your check, would you say?
So we are down to roughly about 160 homes that are listed as unknown currently. We do have more and more calling in every day, but we do need to get that done. So when we do apply for this, that everybody that is entitled to have their lines replaced, that they can join in to participate in that, like I said, it's most likely going to be free of cost from the homeowner's point of view, from what I've witnessed going on in the past year.
How many homes do we have, like, close to 400?
Yes, it's in the-
I was thinking like upper 380, something like that?
Homes in terms of what, Mayor?
Well, he said we have like 160 that are unknown, so-
Water residential buildings that would have a water service?
Yeah, so just in Bayport, I believe it's 700 to 800.
Oh, oh yeah.
Yeah.
I suppose.
So, on that note-
Just Bayport, you're not, you're not counting the Baytown ones that we supply water to?
No, not counting Baytown, Baytown, it wouldn't even be considered for this, they all have new developments.
Yeah, they wouldn't have lead.
Inspiration wouldn't be counted in there either.
Inspiration is not counted either, they have all, either copper, or, but they have all copper. You said you had, there's about 160, is there a list of that? Would that be something that would be good to put on, like, the website, so people could look and see if they, I don't know, I'm just an idea.
Wouldn't you know, you had to let them into your house.
Everybody that is on that list has received a personal letter from the city.
Okay.
So we did do mailings, and we are just now waiting for them to reply, because we do have to get into the home to verify what their service is.
Okay.
I got a letter.
Carl, that's you too, I got a letter too.
Really?
Mine's probably with my newsletter.
Notice I didn't say anything.
We've had ours checked already, I know they already came, so, all right. What else we got, Sarah?
Sarah had to go home sick, so I'm filling in for her. So, on Sarah's list this month was updates to personnel policy, that was seen in the consent agenda to comply with state law regarding Minnesota paid leave, and then FMLA. Also, fee schedule updates, that's been approved. Those changes will get put in the new packet, and that'll get sent to, I believe it has to get recorded, so, not recorded, but updated, updated in our ordinance, so. Planning Commission, there is a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for November 17th to hear to land use applications. First application is for operation of a retail cannabis business at 243 Third Street North. And then the second application is for variances to allow for the reconstruction of a non-conforming boathouse structure at 317 Lake Street. The new website will launch this Wednesday, so watch for one last email blast tomorrow from the current website, with how to sign up for notifications on the new website. You have to sign up for the new one, unfortunately, we couldn't transfer people over.
Okay, it's probably going to take more than one blast to get people to sign up, just, so we have a schedule, I would say, do at least three reach times that you contact everyone, but, okay, great.
That is all for Sarah's report.
Very exciting.
Yeah, are we back up to a full Planning Commission now, in terms of members, or are we still light?
I think we're still down one, aren't we? Like, who came, we just had a joint one, and wasn't there only four people here?
Yeah, I believe, yes, we are at a full Planning Commission, but that will change January 1st, I believe.
Okay.
But we want people to apply, because we're losing someone.
Yes.
Okay. I got, just another note, if you're looking at the packet that is currently online, it says 143 Third Street North is where the retail cannabis business is looking to go, and that was just a typo, so. Just wanted to clarify that.
All right, any other questions for Sarah?
Hopefully not.
All right, my report, I just have a couple of things. The Fire Chief position will get posted this week with a couple of updates to minimum qualifications, and then an update to what was passed tonight for a new salary range. Our intent is to potentially interview probably early December, and the holidays play a big role there, but, and depending on the background check, which has, can vary greatly, right, our intent would be to get somebody on board in January. That, of course, is our intent. Bayhaven, just an update there, tree removal and grading have started at the development. I'm sure if anybody's driven past or looked on Facebook, they have seen that some of that tree removal has occurred. Just for everybody out there, tree removal is definitely regulated, right? They know which trees that they can and can't take. It's recorded on a map, and they did an excellent job of identifying all of those trees, so.
And they will replant trees, like, they have rules around that as well.
Correct, there is a plan for replanting of trees that are scheduled to be removed. If ones are removed that aren't supposed to be, there is a penalty in place.
I mean, it's in their best interest to have, there's some gorgeous oak trees there, they're not going to want to cut. I mean, that's part of the appeal.
I will say, the developer and land, kind of the contract land guy, actually went around before all this started and looked at specific oak trees to see, because they were, some of them were right on the edge of trying to be saved, and they tried their best to save some of the bigger ones.
And, you know, people get, that property particularly, I drive by it all the time. It's full of buckthorn, which is undesirable invasive, so, yeah, that stuff's going to go away. It was never meant to be there in the first place, so.
Good point.
Okay, then my last item is the cleanup effort at On Point Road. So, there is a court hearing this week, that hopefully we will get some direction from the court regarding that. And again, it is our intent, intent again, to continue mitigation of that property, hopefully this year still, as weather holds out. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions for Matt?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt and Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have anything they'd like to announce?
I do, I just want to congratulate the Stillwater Varsity Soccer Girls, they won the state tournament this year. Pretty awesome, yeah, Friday morning, I was there, it was cool.
That's great.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, and they got school off, the kids could go watch the game, right?
Yeah, no, they, Stillwater was off on Friday.
Oh, they were already out?
The student section was much bigger on Wednesday, I will tell you that.
What was the other day, it was like Wednesday?
Wednesday was like the semifinals or whatever, and then the finals were on, but, yeah, it was a good, it was a good game.
Awesome.
Yeah, congrats to them.
If we were Stillwater, we'd probably have some proclamation about it, because they do proclamations all the time about things, yeah.
Probably have some Bayport girls.
No, I'm just saying, how the city of Stillwater likes to do proclamations.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, great, any other announcements? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you Katie and John, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go, we are adjourned.